Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Arvada City Council Meeting for March 5th, 2018. Call this meeting to order and call on Councilwoman Dot Miller.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, would you call the roll?
Number four.
Here. Here.
Number four.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams? Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to move that we excuse Mayor Williams for tonight's business meeting.
All votes are cast. There are six yeses and no nos, so Mayor Williams is excused. Okay, next up, we have the approval of the minutes of the February 5th, 2018 council meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as submitted. We have no petitions or recognitions tonight, so next up, we have public comment. So I'd like to start by calling on Reagan Robertson.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Reagan Robertson, and I'm a member of the Arvada Festivals Commission, and I've come here tonight to invite you guys to the 14th Annual High Tea for Seniors on Saturday, March 20th. This year, it'll be held at the Apex Community Center from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and this event is designed for residents that are celebrating 90-plus years of life. It's a great opportunity to reminisce on what has and continues to make Arvada a great place to live, so hopefully, all of you guys are able to join us this Saturday. We also wanted to share a few highlights from our last festival, Winterfest, that was held at the McAvoy Park last weekend. We estimated about 1,200 people attended that event, and it was a brand-new festival for us this year. Winterfest was also featured in the Denver Post and the Arvada Press. This was a great first year for this festival, and the Arvada Festivals Commission is looking forward to our spring events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for coming up tonight. You know, one of the great things about Arvada is all the volunteer effort that our citizens put in to make this a better place, and the Festivals Commission is a fantastic example of that. The amount of effort that you guys put into putting on these festivals and coming up with new festivals and new ways of doing it is really outstanding, and just want to say thank you for all the work you do and the whole Commission.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have Mark Thompson. Hello, Mr. Thompson.
How you doing? Thank you, members of council. Thank you for the time. My name is Mark Thompson. I've come with a few friends tonight. These are my brothers and sisters. I'm a representative of the Colorado Carters. I entered an apprenticeship right out of high school, and this is how I've chose to provide for my family along with my brothers and sisters. I've been building in our communities for over 30 years. I'd like to share with you tonight the issues our industry is facing and what we're up against in order to remain an asset to our communities rather than a burden. Our industry is dirty. It has become polluted with wage theft, payroll fraud, exploitation of a workforce by labor brokers that pay cash under the table. This means no taxes, no workers' compensation benefits, no unemployment benefits. These brokers normally do not pay overtime and many times do not pay for the hours worked. This has become common in our industry because contractors and labor brokers have been allowed to get away with breaking the law and cheating the workforce. Responsible contractors cannot compete with these illegal activities. This in turn cheats our communities in which we live. We have approached many government agencies and elected officials, along with reaching out to developers, investors, and responsible industry partners for help to bring awareness to the criminal activity that is going on in our trade and in our communities. We continually hit a wall because it's easier to sleep at night if we refuse to acknowledge it's going on in our own backyard. These labor brokers are often involved in many criminal activities, including money laundering, human trafficking, and drug trafficking. Is this the criminal element we want to allow to continue to prosper in our communities? Just a short distance from here hearkens theater as remodeling. They've brought with them a general contractor from Texas Parkway Construction that has exposed our community to a subcontractor that is utilizing labor brokers that are paying cash under the table and breaking state and federal employment laws. We have started a public awareness campaign which we are branding Criminal Colorado. I'm asking you tonight to make a commitment and stand with us against these illegal activities. Why can't the city council and the city of Arvada do to protect our citizens? Would you be willing to look into this issue, and would you be willing to write a letter to our governor asking him to move on this issue? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thanks for your comment. Okay, next up, I have Rachel Smallwood.
Good evening. My name is -- do I need to spell my name and everything?
Please.
Rachel, R-A-C-H-A-E-L, Smallwood, S-M-A-L-L-W-O-O-D. I live at 6108 Route Court, R-O-U-T-T. I'm here tonight as a representative of the group Arvadins for Progressive Action, and I just want to take a side note to thank all these people who came here tonight. It was enlightening to me. I didn't know about that, so thank you. I'm here, though, to talk about our appreciation for Arvada's police department, and I have just a letter of thank you to them that I'd like to read. Dear Arvada Police Department, Arvadins for Progressive Action wishes to thank you for all you do for our community. Thank you for working in our schools and building positive relationships with our children. Thank you for working with the Arvada Courts to find rehabilitative solutions before punishment. Thank you for prioritizing the safety of the whole community, including the safety of our immigrants. Thank you for limiting the use of force and thereby keeping us all safer. Thank you for working with the community and being an integral part of its fabric. Thank you for the daily risks you take and for your bravery. We are deeply saddened by the recent losses in Colorado law enforcement. We are so sorry for the impact this has on you and your families. Please accept our condolences and know that our thoughts are with you. We greatly appreciate the risks and sacrifices that you all give to make our community a safe and peaceful place. Sincerely, all of us at Arvadins for Progressive Action. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you, and thanks for your comments, and I would echo those comments about sympathy for law enforcement, especially in these tough times, and big compliments to the Arvada Police Department for the great job they do for all of us every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have -- or is anybody else who'd like to speak in public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is Resolution R. 18-021, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Martin &amp; Martin, Inc. to prepare a water distribution center master plan for the city of Arvada Water Treatment System. Let's see. Got that one not quite right. Second up is R. 18-022, a resolution authorizing city of Arvada to obtain laboratory services for water treatment operations not to exceed approximately $125,000 annually. Third up, we have Resolution R. 18-023, a resolution accepting a drainage and slope easement from Foothills Community Church within the Candela's Commercial filing number one for Indiana Street improvements. Next, we have Resolution R. 18-024, a resolution accepting a warranty deed from Foothills Community Church within Candela's Commercial filing number one for Indiana Street improvements. Next, we have a resolution authorizing a construction contract by and between the city of Arvada and APC Construction Company, LLC, for 2018 mill overlay and reconstruction in an amount not to exceed approximately $6.6 million. Next, we have Resolution R. 18-026, a resolution authorizing a construction contract by and between the city of Arvada and Jalisco International, Inc. for West 72nd Avenue and Indiana intersection improvements in an amount not to exceed approximately $6.5 million. Next up, we have R. 18-027, a resolution authorizing the Fourth Amendment to the city of Arvada Retirement Plan Trust dated January 1st, 2009. Next, we have Resolution R. 18-028, a resolution authorizing a construction contract by and between the city of Arvada and Rock &amp; Company, Inc. for Farmers High Line Canal Bridge at Clubcrest in an amount not to exceed approximately $164,000. Next, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Frontier Environmental Services, LLC, for fiber conduit boring in an amount not to exceed $750,000. Next, R. 18-030, a resolution accepting an annexation petition concerning Sabell 5650 Ward Road, finding said petition substantially compliant with CRS 31-12-102, and setting a public hearing for May 7th, 2018, 6:30 p.m. at City Hall in Arvada for city council to determine whether the area meets the requirements of CRS 31-12-104 and 105 and is considered eligible for annexation. And finally, Resolution R. 18-031, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number R. 18-016 and re-accepting an annexation petition concerning Ralston Ridge, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street, finding said petition substantially compliant with CRS 31-12-107, and setting a public hearing for April 16th, 2018, 6:30 p.m. at Arvada City Hall for city council to determine whether the area meets the requirements of CRS 31-12-104 and 105 and is considered eligible for annexation. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I just want to clarify. I thought he -- on the CRS, did he read that one right on Resolution 18-030? Did you catch that?
He said 102 instead of 107.
Yeah, 107.
It should've been 107. That was on...
Was it 30?
30.
Yeah, it was 30.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's compliant with CRS 31-12-107, one print. Okay. I'll make the motion to approve. Give me a second. My motion is to approve consent agenda items for Resolution 18-021 through Resolution 18-031.
Okay, so the motion is for approval of the consent agenda. Okay. All members have voted, and that passes 6 to 0 with Mayor Williams being absent. So next up, I have -- we have ordinances on first reading. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 18-008, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, 7120, and 7000 Indiana Street, and Council Bill 18-009, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, from Jefferson County A-1 and A-2 Agricultural to the city of Arvada PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 4.05 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for April 16th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay, so the motion is for approval of the first two... All votes have been cast. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 18-010, an ordinance increasing the size of the Board of Directors of the Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District, adding provisions relating to the length of terms and term limits, and Council Bill 18-011, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Arvada Code through adoption of general and administrative provisions, and the adoption by reference of the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Residential Code, the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2015 International Existing Building Code, the 2015 International Fuel/Gas Code, the 2015 International Mechanical Code, the 2015 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2014 National Electrical Code, and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof, and Council Bill 18-012, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of self-storage businesses be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing date to be set for March 19th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. All votes have been cast. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent. Okay, so next up, we would have our public hearings. Because of our rules, we can't start our public hearings until 6:30 p.m., so instead, I'm going to move forward the reports from city council. So if anyone on city council has a report they'd like to make. Ms. Ford?
Well, there are two events coming up in the community. One will be in Old Town. The Old Town bid will be doing the St. Patrick's Day event, and what's different about this year is that the Arts and Culture Steering Committee is going to be overseeing a project. It will be a paint-by-number, not quite, mural painting on one of the buildings. Maria, which building is that?
It's by the 12-volt, I believe, on the east-facing wall.
Mm-hmm, and I believe they are having an artist create that work. And then the other information is that the Arvada Center continues to have the auction, a silent auction, for raising funds to keep our... What do I want to say? Galleries space free. And so that ends on the 31st of March, and they'll be also revealing next year's plays and programming that night as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, you know, I think the... For most people that don't know it, but council does sit on several local, regional, and national boards, and for myself, I've been sitting on a lot of national and regional boards, not so much on the local boards, and I just wanted to share with my members here that I was unanimously voted in as the vice chair of Dr. Cog and the 2019 chair of Dr. Cog. It automatically moves up. So Arvada will be leading one of the, I would consider, influential organizations that impact transportation and the way we live in the greater community, because not everyone realizes we have borders, you know, between the cities, and so when you drive into one city to another city, you don't realize that sometimes you've left one to enter another, and Dr. Cog helps make that connectivity work. So I'm proud to represent my community at that table and a very good organization, and look forward to serving the next two years at Dr. Cog.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer, and thank you for all you do for us on that board. For those who don't know, that requires an exceptional amount of time and effort, and Mr. Pfeiffer puts in lots of his own personal time in on that board and to all of our benefits, so thank you for doing that. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. As we're all aware of, there's a lot of conversation around school safety and what's being done in communities around the nation in light of the recent tragedy in Florida. And I just wanted to make you aware of a panel discussion that's happening at Lakewood High School on March 20th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. that will be hosted by Dr. Jason Glass, the Jefferson County Superintendent, and the panelists will be police chiefs from Arvada, Wheat Ridge, West Minister, Edgewater, Lakewood, the director of Safe to Tell, the Jefferson County Sheriff, our district attorney, Golden Police Chief also, the director of John Michael Keys, the I Love You Guys Foundation, and John McDonald, who's the executive director of security for Jefferson County Public Schools. I came previous to our meetings tonight. I was at a meeting where Dr. Glass was, and he spoke of making sure that in Jefferson County, we continue the conversation, only because there's a lot of debate about what's the right thing to do, but the reality is, is that the right thing to do is to continue talking as a community so that we can do what's right for our community. But I think that's important, so I would encourage everyone to go and listen to that great panel speak about how they're supporting our schools right here in our own backyard. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you for your time put into those things on our behalf. We appreciate it. We have about a minute to go before we can start our public hearing, so I'll go to Mr. Devin. Do you have anything for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are in the process of updating our workshop schedule for the rest of the year, which would lay out the issues and follow-up items that you identified for us during the council retreat back on January the 19th. We have laid it out, started to lay it out, and then in checking on the availability of consultants and also availability of certain council members to make certain meetings, we've had to make some revisions, but within the next week or so, we'll give you a schedule so you can take a look at what we've laid out, and that will be our menu of things to follow up on from the council retreat. So I would look for that. We do, I think there is a... It's updated. Oh, there... Okay, it's been updated, but they don't have this yet. So the schedule that you receive tonight in your folder actually has been updated, and we'll be providing some additional descriptions of those workshop items as we go forward, so you'll have an idea of when we're bringing back certain items.
Great, thank you. Mr. McGough?
Yes, if I might, I'll go ahead with a short announcement, too, since we had the information items from the other council members. The city of Arvada is really honored, over the next couple of weeks, to be visited by the state historian Patricia Limerick, professor at the University of Colorado and also the historian for the state at History Colorado. Will be visiting Arvada Center next Saturday afternoon, presenting a lecture having to do with World War I, specifically the film and the book, All Quiet on the Western Front. That will happen on Saturday afternoon at the Arvada Center. The following Wednesday, on the 14th, will be visited by the state poet laureate Joe Hutchison, who is a professor at Denver University, who has written a program called War of Words, which is a poetry that was generated during World War I, and it will be presented by actors from the Arvada Center in the Black Box Theater on the evening of Wednesday, March 14. On Saturday, the 17th, after people have celebrated St. Patrick's Day during the day, you can come to the Arvada Center for a presentation of the film, All Quiet on the Western Front, followed by a scholar-led discussion by a professor from Metropolitan State College. So it's, you know, we're very honored that the Arvada Center has taken the lead in creating and sponsoring many programs for the World War I Commission, and we're very honored as a community to have these scholars and these special programs in the city. So I would hope that some of the council members and members of the public would be informed of those programs and would come and enjoy them with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGough. Okay, 6:30, so we'll start our public hearings. I'll start by opening the public hearing on Resolution 18-032, a resolution setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the city of Arvada, Colorado, Arvada Dental, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street. Along with that, we'll also open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-003, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Arvada Dental, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street, ordinance number 4621. And we'll also open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-004, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Arvada Dental, from Jefferson County A-2 Agriculture to city of Arvada P-1 Professional Office, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street, ordinance number 4622. Mr. Devin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Director of Community Development, Reid McConnell, will start this presentation.
Thank you. This proposal is for a .91 acre annexation and rezoning to allow for the construction of a single-story, 8,000-square-foot medical office building. The rezoning is to a standard zone district, which requires a conceptual site plan with rezoning and a formal site plan with an administrative review process prior to issuance of a building permit. The land use is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and the conceptual site plan meets the Land Development Code standards for the proposed P-1 Zone District. Staff recommends approval for this with one condition. Planning Commission voted six in favor with one absent. I have received the affidavit, mailing, and posting log, and they are in order. Jake Nichol, senior planner, is available for staff questions. The applicant, Ron Felite, is in attendance for a presentation.
Okay, so I'll make the posting log and affidavit a permanent part of the record, and sir, if you'll come on down to the podium, and if you and anyone else who plans to testify on this matter, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this case?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us about your case.
My name is Ron Felite, Felite Architects. We office at 863 Santa Fe Drive in Denver. We've been working with not only our client, but we've been working with city staff to put together a set of documents which include the site plan that was referenced, and in review, the parking layout, vehicular movement, utility infrastructure, surface water management, emergency response, and trash service have all been coordinated with the city engineers, first responders, and private service providers. We also had to submit elevations of what the building would look like. We've chosen to give it an identifiable and yet friendly shape by giving it pitched roofs, something just maybe a hint at residential, including a porch, which I think will set the building into the ground much easier. Building materials, the building materials are selected to blend in with the area and include a palette of stone, stucco, and the look of heavy timber with colors that would be warm and friendly colors. As far as the landscape layout is concerned, we have submitted a landscape plan, which is designed to enhance the look from the street, soften the relationship to the neighboring uses, and provide a comforting experience as one walks from the vehicle to the building. The plant species are chosen to provide scale and color throughout the four seasons while complying with the city criteria, as well as being sensitive to minimal water use. That's what I... If you have questions, I'm more than happy to facilitate.
Okay, we may have some questions for you in a minute. Is there any member of the public here who would like to testify in this particular case? Hey, seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion of this case. Oh, is there? I'm sorry. Sir, if you could come on up here. And did you raise your hand and get sworn in earlier? You did? Okay. If you'd state your name and your address, and then go ahead and...
My name is Mike Woods, and my office building is at 5730 Ward Road in Arvada. And I'm actually the dentist that wants to move into this practice. I'm in Arvada. I really like Arvada, and I want to stay in Arvada. I, I'm in Arvada, I really like Arvada, and I want to stay in Arvada, and so I want to get this building developed so I can move my practice over there.
Okay.
That's all you have?
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, anyone else who'd like to testify in this case? Okay, so we'll close the, the public input portion of this case and invite questions from members of council. Councilmember Ford?
I just had a couple of questions. In terms of the parking, the material said that there could be up to 24 employees, which means that that would give about 16 spaces if there were 24 employees for customers, clients. Is there any, do we see any issues with that in terms of parking? Will that be enough?
Our, our medical office parking rates are 5,000 square feet, and that's not a use that we typically hear problems with regarding that ratio, so staff does not have any concerns. They are meeting the minimum, and we feel that should sufficiently park the building in the use.
Okay. And then I just had one general question on the improvements that are planned for the West 64th Avenue and Indiana Street intersection. Do we have any idea when that will occur, or when that's planned for?
Are you referencing the south leg of the intersection?
The whole. The one that we're referencing in terms of fees that are being paid in lieu of...
So, that is for the south leg of the intersection. That property is actually still in the county, so until that property were to annex or develop, we could not build that last remaining leg.
Okay, so they'll just be held, then, for that particular time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, speaking of the intersection, so you're saying you're collecting fees, you're not improving the intersection, we're going to hold the fees until the day comes, and we'll apply those fees to improve the intersection.
Correct.
And so, did traffic look at this, this, that's probably the, one of the worst intersections I think we have in our city, and we're, I don't know how many feet from there. Can you, can somebody explain kind of the thought process with the right-in, right-out only, and that's so close to an intersection?
By law, we have to give them reasonable access, and so that is the only access that they can get to that property. We did ask them to look into potentially sharing an access with the property to the, either to the, to the east or west of them, but we can't require them to do that, and so they weren't able to get some kind of agreement. So, that was basically the only location where they could have access. We pushed it as furthest away from that intersection as possible.
And so, none of the neighboring, I'm sorry, I'm kind of confused on some of your statements you just said. By law, because I know we had similar hearings that we weren't forced into anything, but I want to make sure I understood you, your word you used there.
So, what the, what the legal term, you know, determination is, is that we have to give access to the property, reasonable access to the property.
Okay, that's the law. It's not saying the law says I have to give them, if it's a public safety or a traffic safety issue, I'm sure that could be trumped if that was an issue, right? Because that's not reasonable now, because it's now a traffic concern.
Um...
Or should I ask that of Chris Daly?
I, I can't answer that from an engineering standpoint.
I just want to make sure I understood what she just said about the law.
Okay, so the way I would interpret it is that, that a reasonable access is the, if you want to look at it as the floor, so we need, we need to be able to provide reasonable access as a floor. But in terms of as a ceiling, you know, depending on whatever council as a whole feels is necessary out there to deal with the traffic impacts, given the expertise of the traffic engineer in this particular matter, you know, we could require, you know, something more than that, but it's, we're legally required. I mean, you can't just not give them access to their property.
Okay, so how far are we from that intersection? And, and, you know, I know it's not, it's not going to generate a lot, I just know the intersection just west of there was the highest accident, intersection in the county at one point. So, now I want to understand kind of the impacts of having this right-in, right-out into a property that wasn't there before, right at, right between two heavily, heavy-traveled and lots of accident intersection. Does no one hear from traffic?
So, the axis is approximately 250 feet from the intersection as far as level of service, so they did have to do a traffic study that showed that with the improvements that the city has made at the 64th and Indiana intersection with the dual lefts, it is going to operate on a much better level of service, as well as their access point is operating at an acceptable level of service as well.
And is there still a median in front of this location? I can't tell with these drawings.
Yes, there is.
So, we're, so the, so there is a median, they can't take a left out of there?
Correct.
Okay, because where did that, where did that go away? Didn't it go away somewhere there to make the dual turns, or is there still a small median there?
No, there's still a small median there.
Okay, there is, all right. And then the question, I think maybe for the applicant, can we go to the drawings? I didn't, I couldn't follow what he was saying in the drawings. Are you putting up a wall around your property?
There is a small, oh, no.
Here, I think they'll get it up there in a minute. No, the next one, I think, that one.
Oh.
So, I'm confused with the bright green line in this wall and what that all means to me.
That's a product of, sorry, that's a product of the draftsman in my office.
Okay, I've just never seen it that way, so could you explain what that's telling us?
Well, it's telling us that we didn't model the topography outside of the property. We only modeled the surface within the...
Okay, so is the whole property just elevated, just to highlight that you're talking about that, or are you going to be moving dirt around and creating the back end of this office higher?
We are, the floor of the office will be maybe a foot higher than the earth is right now, back there, and we do have to move all the water towards the street, but no, there's not going to be a wall all the way around the property. That's, like I said, we modeled the topography within the property lines, but we didn't model it outside of the property lines. Had we done that, there would have been a smooth transition.
So, are you creating any water issues for the surrounding properties by raising that, that back end?
No, the reason for raising it up about a little more than a foot, if I remember right, at the rear property line, is to make sure that all the water does move towards the street.
But you're not creating a hill where more water's going towards the property behind you?
No, in fact, we're solving that problem.
Okay, okay, and that is not a wall?
That is not a wall.
That's just a gray thing that's been put into a drawing?
It's a drafting problem.
Okay, all right, so it should be smooth to the property?
Yep.
To the east?
There is a slight amount, when I say slight, I mean, it's like 12 inches, maybe?
Yeah.
Or 18, towards the north side of the property, just to make sure that the water does not go to the east.
Okay, but there's no barriers being created anywhere around this property, other than just to control water?
That's correct. In fact, the long-term forecast is that this property will be accessed from the east, and so we've made sure that there is a very smooth transition in the future.
Yeah, I would like that a lot better than through the north. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just real quick, on the conversation with the right-in, right-out, it indicated that there's a new turn lane. How is that going to fit in with the current sidewalk? And I don't know if that's a question for you or for our engineer over here.
So, there is a new turn lane that the city just put in at the intersection of 64th and Indiana, going eastbound to northbound. There is an existing acceleration lane along the frontage of the western property. What the applicant is planning to do is actually extend it to their property line so that they are forced to make a right-in. So, it's an existing lane that they're just extending further east.
Okay, so, I guess I'm not seeing that, because as I look at Google Maps, I'm not seeing what you just referenced. I know that there's two turn lanes, east to north, from 64th to Indiana, but on the drawing, it says new turn lane, and I'm just trying to figure out if that's a new turn lane, is that a new turn lane in addition to the west and eastbound 64th lanes?
So, it's a, so it's a new turn lane from Joyce Drive to their access point. So, right now, the current configuration along Joyce Drive is that there's a free right-turn acceleration, and then it tapers just at the beginning of their property, there's existing guardrail.
And there's public utilities there? No, that's down.
Correct, and so what they're planning to do is actually extend that existing acceleration lane and make it basically an add-drop lane between Joyce and their access point.
I guess I'm still not seeing it. Again, with the, isn't there a sidewalk along there as well?
Correct, it's an existing attached sidewalk.
And the acceleration lane, and I'm not a street engineer, but the acceleration lane doesn't look like it goes that far.
Correct, so they'll, they'll be extending it until they get to their access point.
Okay, and so how many feet from where the acceleration lane currently ends today until their access point? How far is that?
Roughly 200 feet, approximately.
And, so are they going to redo that entire sidewalk along there? It doesn't, I guess I just don't see how, how this is going to work.
So, as you can see where, so there's Joyce Drive, and then it starts to taper back into the through-street. What they're planning to do is take out a little bit of that taper and make it tangent with the flow line, and therefore, it's basically just going to become, it's going to force people into their sight. So, it's, they're just extending that flow line to get rid of a little bit of that tangent right there.
So, where the cursor was, so right there, that's the portion that's going to be the extension of the, the acceleration lane, or now the new right-in lane to their lot?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense, sorry.
It's okay.
And are there any issues with that property where that acceleration, I don't know who owns that property, or are there issues with that, doing those kinds of things in front of that property, or if somebody comes in and buys that and wants to do something different? Are there any downhill effects of making that decision now?
No, so that is all actually in public right-of-way, and as you can see, that property to the, to the west of them already kind of use it as a, it's already a right-in, right-out, an existing right-in, right-out, so we're just extending it to access also their proposed access point.
Okay, I thank you for, because I, my screen's a little smaller, so I couldn't see that very well, so thank you for bringing that up on the big screen. That was really my only question, is just, you know, I think they've already asked some of the questions in concern, you know, with the traffic there on 64th. With that new lane for the right-in, I think absolutely helps alleviate some of that concern that I had, so thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Second bite. And there was nothing you could do with the property of the west of you? I mean, now that we're seeing, there's already a driveway there, there's even access off of Joyce, straight there, all the way up to the property line, so there's, there was nothing that could be achieved there?
We did talk to those folks, and they wished us luck, but they were not going to grant us any manipulation of their, their curb cut or their properties.
Okay, yeah, I know we don't always like extra driveways on roads, but too bad that we can't make something work there. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any more questions from council? Okay, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion. Mr. Jones?
Let me get back to my, so we're going to do all three?
Each one separately, so we'll do the, do the resolution, we'll vote on it, and then move on to the next one, so.
Thank you. I move that R. 18-032, a resolution setting forth certain, setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Arvada Dental, southwest of our, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street be approved, be adopted.
Okay, so the motion is for adoption. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos, with Mayor Williams being absent.
I move that Council Bill 18-003, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Arvada Dental, southwest, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street be approved, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval on final reading numbered 4621 and ordered published by Title Only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. Members have voted, there are six yeses and zero nos, with Mayor Williams being absent, so that passes. And Mr. Jones?
And finally, I move that Council Bill 18-004, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Arvada Dental, from Jefferson County A2 Agricultural to the City of Arvada P1 Professional Office, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, southwest of West 64th and Indiana Street be approved on final reading numbered 4622 and ordered published by Title Only, and this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
So, the motion is for approval of the rezoning. All members have voted, and that passes six to zero, with Mayor Williams being absent. Congratulations, sir, good luck on your project. Okay, so next, we will open public hearing on Resolution R. 18-033, a resolution setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Apex Estates, 12903 West 72nd Avenue. Along with that, we'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-005, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Apex Estates, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, ordinance number 4623. We'll also open the, open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-006, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Apex Estates, from Jefferson County A2 Agriculture to City of Arvada, PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, four dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, ordinance number 4624. We'll also consider the Apex Estates Preliminary Development Plan, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, and the Apex Estates Preliminary Platte, 12903 West 72nd Avenue. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, Members, the council, we'll have Reid McConnell start this presentation.
Thank you. This proposal is for the development of 15 single-family detached homes on 3.75 acres. The resulting density is four dwelling units per acre. The request includes modifications to the planned unit development standards pertaining to front and side setbacks, lot size, lot coverage, lot width, and a slight reduction in the open space requirement. These modifications help contribute to a more diverse housing product and are similar to adjacent residential development. Staff finds the project in conformance with the comprehensive plan, as well as the Land Development Code, which does anticipate modifications to the planned unit development Zone District. Staff recommends approval for the project with conditions. Planning Commission voted six in favor with one absent. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log, and they are in order. Will Tucker Planner Two is available to assist with staff questions. The applicant, Debbie Clissis, is in attendance for a presentation.
Thank you. So, we'll make the posting log and affidavit a part of the record, and ma'am, if you'd come on up. And if anybody who would like to testify in this case, would please raise their right hand. Do you swear, affirm the testimony you're about to give in this case is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, go ahead and tell us about your proposal.
My name is Debbie Clissis with Gene Engineering. I'm at 5690 Webster Street in Arvada. I'm here to present Apex Estates today. Let me see. It is a PUDR, single-family detached development. We are asking for annexation, rezoning, PDP, and preliminary plat. Thank you. I... There's a vicinity map around 72nd Avenue, really across from the Apex Rec Center, and just west of Ward Road. There's our site plan. So we do have 15 single-family lots. It will be a public street with a cul-de-sac and a standard detention pond. There is a typical rendering of the two-story products. There will be a mixed-up two-story and ranch-style as well. Thank you. And there's a rendering of that. Standard colors and types, we've also added in, just so you are aware, some, what it would look like for the options for stone on the building and a color scheme showing natural colors as well. So we've added these since the planning commission hearing, just to give you an idea of the colors and the look of the buildings. The staff findings, you have those in the staff report. I'm not gonna go through all these, but essentially, we are meeting the comprehensive plan and all the city code requirements and annexation requirements. These are the development standards that are on the preliminary development plan. I won't go into those into detail. Basically, the front and side lot setbacks, we have really tried to, we actually took Richards Farm criteria and copied that because we wanted to mimic that same look. It was recently developed, and we wanted to do that. And so we used all that. The only thing we really changed from Richards Farm was the lot coverage has actually decreased. So we actually have more green space on the lot. We do have a minimum lot size of 5,200 square feet that allows for small lots to provide some more attainable housing, some more, I can't say affordable, because that would be, not the legal term, but attainable. Some smaller lots provide more diverse housing for the city of Arvada. As Rita mentioned, the open space is reduced by 0.3% from the standard of 10%. So we have added some extra landscape features in the detention area and some extra landscaping and stuff to accommodate for that. So in conclusion of proposals with the, within the community interest, it complies with the zoning PUDR, adequate services exist. We will comply with all staff recommendations as we move forward with the final design of the project, and we ask for approval. That's my last slide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have some questions for you in a minute. Is there any member of the public who'd like to make a comment? Come on up. I saw you raised your hand when we swore in, so you're good to go there. If you'd start with your name and your address, and then go ahead and tell us.
My name is Janet Asherman. I'm at 12880 West 73rd Place in Richards Farm. On the slide they just turned off, it said, "All city services, adequate city services exist." I would like to know if they're going to be tapping into our services, and if they are, that they become a part of our metro district?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other member of the public like to speak on this? Okay. Like to have the applicant come on up. If you'd like to respond to that, you certainly may.
As part of the city requirements for the water, that was one thing that was not anticipated during the Richards Farm, was a water connection through there. So if we were to take water from 72nd Avenue, it would be a long dead-end line. So the city has requested that we connect through to Richards Farm up in the northeast corner of our site. That would be a city-public main, however, and it would just make a connection and provide a loop through, to provide adequate pressure for the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'll close the public comment, or public testimony part of this hearing and invite council questions or action. Mr. McGough?
Hey, thank you. Yes, I have a few questions that you're with her for the applicant. Well, the first is from the Planning Commission minutes. There were a couple of things mentioned there that I just want to make sure there. On page two of the Planning Commission minutes, there was a, a reference made to, said, one of the attendees concerned about the applicant developing on his property as there is a boundary disagreement. Is, is there, was there a boundary disagreement as? That has been resolved, I'm assuming.
A neighbor had brought up a dispute about a fence and whether or not he had claimed to adverse possession. He claimed that he would work it out with the developer. The developer agreed. I believe they came to a conclusion, and I think Ms. Clissis will be able to answer that.
Okay.
Yes, my client has met with the neighbor Mark Benaro. He's the one to the east. His fence actually encroaches into the said property. And so we've worked out to relocate his fence and provide a privacy fence for him and any animals that he might have for his property. So I think he's, he's happy with the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay, so that has been resolved. Okay. Or in the process. Also, in that Planning Commission minutes, on the same page, a little further down, it talked about the issue of chemicals. And I didn't see any other reference to that. It said you talked about the, Ms. Clissis, about the encroachment of the fence. And then she talked about the issue of chemicals and said there's an additional 10 feet right of way that is not yet dedicated. What, what is the issue related to chemicals?
The, the property owner to the west has some horses and a horse pasture next to our property and was worried about any chemicals spilling onto his property. Actually, the opposite is true. His property will be draining onto our property, and we'll accommodate that through our grading and drainage improvements that we will do. So.
Okay, so if there are any chemical issues, those will be addressed?
Yes. And again, we will provide on that side as well, a six-foot privacy fence. So his horses and, and, and his, he will not be impacted. He'll be fenced off. The 10-foot private, the 10-foot right of way that you also mentioned, the, the road going up is actually 50 feet wide, and then it is, we are assuming that in the future, another 10 feet of right of way, if the property to the west ever gets developed, that will be dedicated to the city at the time that that gets developed, and they will share the roadway.
Okay, I have a couple other questions, a traffic question on this right in, right out. A westbound vehicle would turn north right to go into the development. An exiting vehicle, if one, if that vehicle wants to go to the east, but the right out mandates turn to the west, what, what is the, where's the turnaround point to get going back east?
So the, the nearest intersection to the site to be able to accommodate someone turning around and going eastbound is at Beach Street, essentially. That's the nearest public intersection.
Or the Apex Center?
The Apex Center has a centralized intersection to, yes, I guess that would also serve. It's a little bit, it'll direct traffic through a neighborhood, residential neighborhood area that isn't quite like a collector's street like Beach is. But if someone really needed to turn around, they could use the roadway grid to be able to, to do so. So they can swing around the neighborhood, come back out on Beach, essentially.
Okay, but it would seem to me the more likely scenario would be to turn to the west, go into the Apex Center, use that as a place to get turned around to go back east. I mean, I don't think, if it were for me, I'm not sure I would go up to Beach Street to make my turn and go through a neighborhood or whatever. I would just simply go through the Apex Center.
Well, it's certainly an option for, for a motorist to do that. But typically, the, the roadway network is what we'd recommend, and say, Google Maps or something would also recommend.
I'm sure the motorists will follow that recommendation. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Nancy Ford?
So on, let me get the page here. On page 10 of the staff report, it mentions that Oberon Middle will be over-enrolled as a result of this project. What, what happens in that case?
The school district said they'll be over-enrolled, and as a result, they will need to pay the necessary school fees, which will be obtained by the city at time of a final plat, and that will go towards the over-enrollment.
In, in what way? Like, what, what does that mean? Does that mean that they're looking to send students somewhere else? Or are they looking to build a school, or?
I, I believe the school district was referring to just the, the impact of increased residential development on the school, and that will be used to mitigate as they see fit for an increased population. They didn't go into details how the money would be used, but it would be used to offset the impact from these 15 single-family homes.
Okay. Then I had a question about, let me get to the page here. Let's see, this is in the letter of February 23rd. The Richards Farm owner who said that he bought a premium corner lot with the understanding from the seller that there would not be any houses built south of Richards Farm. Was that a written agreement?
I'm, I'm not sure of the details of the sale of the property and what they guaranteed that homeowner. These properties have been designated as suburban residential, at least since the comprehensive plan was adopted. So they have been planned for low to medium, or I shouldn't say medium-density residential, but they have been slated for residential for some time.
Okay. And then, just a question. In, Debbie, as far as in the, let me see here where it is. There was mention of possibly building ranch-style homes next to Richards Farm. Is that something that's gonna happen, or no?
Yes, we anticipate that the ranch homes are gonna be very desirable, and we're going to fit as many ranches as possible, especially on that north side bordering Richards Farm. We did talk to the neighbors. They would appreciate the ranch style. So as much as possible, we will be accommodating that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
The variations, so it just seems like it's so difficult to find in these reports. It usually was called out more clearly that you're asking for changes in your setbacks from the zone, from the Land Development Code, right? So you're asking for a reduction of the front yard from 20 feet to 15, and for side, for side-loaded garages, and 17 feet for front yard, or front-loaded garages, and a reduction of side yard setbacks from seven and a half feet to five. And then also a reduction of open space that requires 10% to 9.7%, but you said there was more open space.
I was referring to the lot coverage itself. So the lot coverage is larger than, or, yeah, there's more.
Okay, so you increased the maximum lot coverage from 35 to 45 on two stories, so 40 to 50%.
Yeah. And that, those numbers are actually less than Richards Farm, is what I was referring to as well. So there will be more green space. Richards Farm also has a five-foot setback on the sides, and the, the front setback is a pretty...
So for Rita, does, I thought when we talked about Richards Farm, I thought that there wasn't a variation of five feet was the standard, but this is saying it's, is it because it's a PUDR? Or, help me understand, because I remember that hearing, and five feet was told that that was, that was an acceptable standard setback.
I don't recall the setbacks for Richards Farm.
It's five feet, it's five feet right now, yeah. But at that hearing, I remember it saying five feet was the standard. But according to this, this read from the staff report of the hearing, said it's actually seven and a half feet from property line. So it's a different, I've asked that question quite a bit because I've been a little concerned with how close those houses were.
So we can confirm that on the Land Development Code by pulling it up right now, but.
But seven and a half is the standard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, but we're talking specifically about the PUD standard setback of 7.5 feet and the modification to five feet in this particular case. And you're asking us to confirm whether it was five foot as represented at the public hearing on Richards Farm.
Well, because they're comparing that, there's compatibility, because they did it, we get to do it. So I want to make sure I understand if we're comparing apples to apples or apples to oranges, because I agree that they should be compatible, and they should look a lot alike, and I think that that's good. But I also want to make sure we're consistent and fair to every applicant and that, you know, when we review these. So if you can check that another time, that'd be great.
Sure, we can definitely double-check it. We like to reference adjacent development in terms of compatibility, if it is apple to apple. But again, in the PUD Zone District, and excuse me, I've been sick, so I'm losing my voice again. In the PUD Zone District, we do have that ability to flex up or down. So it's not always gonna be comparing apples to apples. It was really meant, in this particular instance, to say that the modifications they're asking for are consistent with the development standards that were ultimately approved in Richards Farms. Does that help?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we'll double-check just.
Yeah, just for the future. And then also, and maybe I missed it and completely spaced, well, you guys had a conversation around the property on the, the road going in the western side of that property. I'm struggling with, I wish I had it in front of me right away. So that Street Road A, on the western side of that property, what's the plan of that? That road, the entry road with, where there's no houses?
She's bringing up a site plan. This doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, right there. That's fine. So on the bottom of your page.
Yeah, right where Road A is really close to the property line on the bottom of the page. So we are not building a sidewalk, essentially, on that side of the property because there's really nobody going to be using the sidewalk on that side. And because, like I said, that neighbor has livestock and does not want people along his property lines. So we have stopped that, and then in the future, if that property does develop, they will build a sidewalk and complete 10 feet of additional right of way on that property. Does that answer your question?
So we're committing a future property owner that they will have to do this design on that side of the road and do a sidewalk and whatever? I mean, we're, I'm a little worried that we're committing a future property owner to something to make your project work, but maybe not theirs.
Well, there may be additional restrictions to access to that property because that's another skinny property that fronts on 72nd Avenue. So the idea was that they would probably share that, that roadway, Road A, and then their lots would front onto that roadway and be able to use that roadway.
Okay, so you're going between the big house and that one property?
Yeah.
So did we look at a future plan of what that would look like? I mean, are we setting something up that's just odd? I mean, we get, we've gotten complaints for developments that we just shoved them in, and then, you know, I remember people coming in here saying, "Gosh, I have so many cul-de-sacs, but they go nowhere, and it creates more traffic issues and more problems." And, I mean, have we really assessed what this will look like? I mean, is this killing the property on the west side from any future development that would benefit?
No, actually, the, the purpose of this is to allow for future development on the west side, where it's expensive for each property to have individual public roadways running up through these skinny lots. And so what we're doing is, we're requiring this particular project to build half of the roadway plus 10 feet. What that allows is for two-way traffic on the local roadway plus parking along the frontage of the homes on Road A. And in the future, if and when there's development to the west, then they can finish the road. And in the future, if and when there's development to the west, then they can finish the road, they can complete the roadside, essentially build the parking, curb gutter, sidewalk. And there's also Track B, which is up right now on the screen, that is reserved for future connectivity. So if there is a need to extend a road and connect it to Road A, there would be an opportunity to do so from the west. And that way, we're consolidating access points along 72nd Avenue. Currently, the spacing and the reason it's ride-in, ride-out is because the existing intersections are too close to this access point. And in the future, there will be a median along this segment of, of frontage along 72nd Avenue.
Oh, there will be a median once it winds out?
Yes. So we're trying to consolidate the access points, provide access to future development to the west, and in the process, sharing the cost between property owners.
Okay, thank you very much. That was definitely insightful.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Several of my questions have already been answered, but I just want to go back to the, the comment that the neighbor made about the metro district. That was a conscious decision that the, the farms, Richards Farms folks made to create a metro district to help finance their infrastructure. I didn't hear where that was a, a request or something that this developer is doing. They're, they're gonna finance their infrastructure on their own?
Yes. Yes, there's no plans for a metro.
So the, so the tapping into the water on the northwest or northeast corner is merely just tapping into city services?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the request for them to join the metro district isn't really founded because there's no sharing of public utilities, per se?
I think that that's correct, Councilmember Jones. And I will, I will say that there are provisions within the metro district or the special district statutes that provide for inclusion of property within a, an existing metro district. And those conversations would have happened many moons ago if there was a plan by this developer to join that metro district. It certainly wouldn't be on the night that council's looking at doing an approval.
Right. No, and I, yeah, I appreciate, I just wanted to make sure, because I know that those are two separate conversations. So again, I think most of my other questions were answered with regard to traffic. With regard to the median, I know that this might be a crystal ball question, but do we have any idea when those, when that improvement might be made with a median along 72nd Avenue there?
I'm sorry, I don't have a.
Crystal ball?
Yeah.
I had to ask.
No clear timeline at the moment.
I had to ask. So I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any more questions from council? Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Jones?
I move that R-18-033, a resolution setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions to the annexation of certain land into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Apex Estates, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, be adopted.
Okay, so the motion is for adoption of Resolution 18-033. All members of council have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams' absence, so that passes.
I move that Council Bill 18-005, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Apex Estates, 12903 West 76th, excuse me, 72nd Avenue, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval on final reading numbered 4623 and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent. Mr. Jones?
I move that Council Bill 18-006, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Apex Estates, from Jefferson County A2 Agricultural, to the City of Arvada PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, four dwelling acre, four dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, be approved on final reading numbered 4624 and ordered published by title only. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval on the rezoning. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent.
And I move that the Apex Estates Preliminary Development Plan, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent.
And lastly, I move that Apex Estates Preliminary Plat, 12903 West 72nd Avenue, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval of the preliminary plat. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos, so that passes as well. Good luck with your project. So I think we'll take a brief three-minute stretch in place break. Okay, if everybody wants to find their seats again.
Yeah, yeah. So I told them, you know, if you've got a specific question regarding the city business, I'm glad to drop you. Otherwise, Bob, I think, yeah, it's, it is a.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing on Candela's commercial filing for West Preliminary Plat, southeast corner of Highway 93 and 72. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have Rita McConnell start this presentation.
The proposal will subdivide 10.5 acres into six lots and four tracks. Future development is for commercial uses. Staff finds the preliminary plat is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. Staff recommends the approval with conditions listed in the staff report. Planning Commission voted six in favor with one absent. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log, and they are in order. Carol Ebanes, senior planner, is available for staff questions. The applicant, David Kuntz, is in attendance for presentation.
Hey, thank you. We'll make the posting log and affidavit a part of the record. Sir, would you come on up? And if everybody who plans to testify in this matter would raise their hand and swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us about your case.
Hello, my name is David Kuntz, K-U-N-T-Z. I work for Martin Martin, 12499 West Colfax Avenue. I'm here to present the Candela's Commercial Filing for West Preliminary Plat. We have the developer and the design teams here to answer any questions that you have. Project is located in the Candela's development. As you probably know, Candela's is a multi-use development located in northwest Arvada. The proposed project is located at the southeast corner of Highway 72 and Highway 93. The development proposes an internal roadway network to connect to the surrounding highways to connect to the inside lots. The preliminary plat subdivision will divide into 10, or four tracks and six lots. The four tracks will be used for access drainage and utilities, and the lots will house the future commercial developments. Phase one will be the western portion of the development, which will build out the future highway improvements. And then phase two will be the eastern portion. Staff has found that the project meets the nine approval criteria. And in conclusion, it's consistent with the Candela's ODP, and it's gonna provide needed services to the surrounding areas. And we're here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public input portion of this hearing and invite questions or action from city council. Mr. Jones?
I'll have, I have one question, but I'll also reserve the motion when we get to that point. The access onto Highway 93 and Highway 72, I'm assuming, were, to this point, has already been handled and taken care of with CDOT?
Yeah, that's correct. So we had CDOT plans designed and approved a couple of years ago, and so those access permits are still active.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer?
When were those approved? I want to go back to those access points. I'm still struggling with those access points. When were they approved? Three, four years ago?
I believe it was 2015.
So just, just a quick question. So I believe the accidents there are high on 93 and speeds are very high. So we're, are we doing a full ride-in, ride-out and not off that 93? Is that your plan?
Yeah, so there's actually two accesses proposed. The first phase access is gonna be a ride-in, ride-out, which is a blue dot.
Okay, so ride-in, ride-out, all right.
Closer to the intersection. And then there's a, the green dot further to the south will be phase two, and that's gonna be a three-quarter movement.
Is that with a signal?
Uh, no. The only signalized intersection is proposed for Highway 72. It's the.
The full movement one?
The purple full movement up there.
So there'll be a three-quarters. And isn't the train tracks right there?
Yeah, the train tracks is shown in the middle of the plan, and that's the reason that it's divided into two, two separate parcels, is because the, the railroad right-of-way.
Okay. And then, so, so the ride-in, ride-out, are you gonna have a median there to force that ride-in, ride-out?
Uh, there's gonna be a pork chop style median.
Yeah, pork chop style, so they forces them to go right?
Correct.
All right. And there was not any concerns with speeds or anything? Is there gonna be an accelerate, acceleration lane or deceleration lanes?
Yeah, part of the CDOT requirements is that we install the auxiliary lanes for those new intersections. So there'll be ASL, DCL lanes for.
Okay, all right. I was a little worried that they were gonna just start diving out there and fend for yourself and hopefully you're being covered. Yeah. But I see the cops are enforcing out there all the time because of all the accidents, so I just want to make sure we're not compiling. So, thank you. I think you answered all my questions with this.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I'm just wondering, you contemplate, there's construction or commercial development in each of the six lots?
Uh, yes. So they're basically subdividing lots to sell to future users.
So all, all six? There's not one that's for detention or anything like that?
There, there are a couple of tracks in there, so there's a detention tract.
But there still will be, each of the lots will have development on them, each of the six lots?
Correct.
Okay. And what happens to all that, that parking space there at the corner now?
Uh, that's actually in CDOT right-of-way. It's not on the subject parcel.
Oh, is that right? So it's, so it's over.
Yeah, we anticipate that they're gonna remove that parking.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that. Is that a bus stop there? Is that what's there?
The bus stop is actually just north of there, if I'm not wrong.
Is that what people are doing, is park and ride?
I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, you want to make your motion?
Thank you. I move that Candela's Commercial Filing for West Preliminary, West Preliminary Plat, southeast corner of Highway 7, Highway 93 and 72, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. All members have voted. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams absent, so that passes. Okay, next I'll open the public hearing on Candela's Commercial Filing Number Three, Preliminary Plat, northeast corner of Candela's Parkway and West 91st Place. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Rita will introduce this item as well.
Thank you. The proposal will subdivide 44.5 acres into six lots and two tracks and one block. One modification is requested to the height of the retaining walls from four feet to seven feet to accommodate grade conditions and to facilitate the creation of buildable lots. Staff finds the preliminary plat is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. Staff recommends the project for approval with one condition. Planning Commission voted seven in favor of this request. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log, and they are in order. Carol Ebanes, senior planner, is available for staff questions. The applicant, Brandon McCrary, is in attendance for presentation.
Okay, thank you. We'll make the posting log and affidavit a permanent part of the record. Sir, if you could come on up? And if anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your right hand and swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this case is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, thank you. Would you go ahead and tell us about your case?
Uh, thank you, councilmembers, this evening. My name's Brandon McCrary with Galloway Company, 6162 South Greenwood Village, Colorado 8012, 111. Here to present the Candela's Commercial Filing Number Three, Preliminary Plat, on behalf of the Simran Development Company in Jefferson Center Metro District. Similar to the last project that was just presented, this is within the Candela's Master Plan Community. It's on the east side, directly north of the King Supers project, and there is a context plan showing that location. Here's an enlargement of the area, so you can see the King Supers site located right there at Indiana and Candela's Parkway. And this plat area is the area in the bold dark outline, just north of West 91st Place. The overall plat does include the area even north of that. There's the Big Dry Creek Drainage Way just to the north of that, that shaded bold area there. And that's the area that we're actually subdividing into future developable parcels with this plat. The years, there's a remaining 23-acre, remaining area north of the Dry Creek there that will be subdivided in the future. What we're doing with this plat is also creating a tract to contain the, the Dry Creek Drainage Way. Here's just an enlargement of the western side of the, the area that we're plating to highlight the, the developable tracks we're creating. So this is at Candela's Parkway and West 91st Place here. There was a private drive that's gonna be constructed that connects to Candela's Parkway. You can see that arrow, and that will be a ride-in, ride-out onto Candela's Parkway, and it'll loop back around and, and be a full motion access onto West 91st Place. That access on West 91st Place is directly across from the recently constructed King Supers access onto West 91st Place as well. Supers access onto West 91st Place as well. As mentioned in the staff report, we are requesting a flex to the height of the retaining walls associated with this project to, basically, we're creating developable pads here between West 91st Place and the drainage basin. And so to create the depth and to be clear of that drainage basin, we need to limit the tiers of the walls that we're constructing here to create that space. There's also the recently constructed walls out there that we are matching with this design of the tier heights for these walls. So it'll be a consistent wall system throughout. And we do meet the approval criteria. I won't go through that in detail as it's in the staff report. And that concludes the presentation. We're here for any questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion of this hearing and invite questions or action from city council. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So that wall you're building? Sounds weird when I say it that way. I mean, how, how high is it? What is it going to look like? I mean, it's just really to, one, build up the property, I think, one, right? And two, to kind of contain the floods area? Is that? Explain the purpose.
Yeah, a little bit, so there's a, there's a flood, flood plain
Yeah, right.
With, associated with Dry Creek, so to stay clear of the flood plain. We're starting the grading there with the wall systems. And so then, to basically level out the grade between West 91st Place and the developable area
Right.
Before you touch the creek, we have to build the walls to a certain height within a certain horizontal distance to create adequate depth to developable, to create a developable pad there.
So I'm just trying to, worried about a flood. So how, how tall are these walls? I mean, what are they? I'm trying to envision them in a way. So I get that you're trying to level off your developable area, but I also need to worry about future flood control and what you're trying to do there. I'm sure you're running this by the flood district?
Yeah, so
FEMA and others?
That's been approved of, a design for the contained floodway has been done and approved through FEMA. This is everything outside of that. So any, you know, 100-year flood that would go through there would be below the bottom of the walls here in this case. So the walls won't be impacted by that flood?
So how high are they?
So then the walls above the flood plain are roughly, you know, four tiers of about five to six feet tall. So 20, 25 feet. Tapering down to zero, so that's probably the max height.
Okay, to, towards, what is that, Candela's Parkway?
Yeah, so toward Candela's Parkway, they taper down to zero. As you get further around to the north,
They go higher?
That's where the height of the walls increase.
Okay, and then it'll be up to the individual developed lots to secure those so no one falls off? Are there five-foot tiers, is what you said?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then they're buffered out? Is that how they're going to look?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be on the individual, and so in this case, there are, there's a detention pond tract, basically separating most of the lots from the edge of the wall. So that'll create that buffer as well.
Okay.
The Metro District is installing the walls.
Oh, they are?
So that'll be the responsibility of the Metro District, and it would be in Metro District tracks.
But does this have to be approved by the flood district? The drainage and flood district? Yeah?
No. This, this is being reviewed by the city in terms of where the wall location is.
Yeah, but the whole flood plain itself, I mean, they're messing with it, I would assume.
Well, basically, my understanding is they have been removed from the, with the letter of map revision. The flood insurance rate map has removed this area from the Big Dry Creek flood plain. So they have done the requirements.
Okay, so it did remove it from the flood plain?
Yes.
And urban drainage doesn't have to weigh in on anything dealing with
They were part of the review process.
Okay.
And, and we, and something that maybe our engineer can jump in on this one. Riley's our engineer that can
Urban drainage reviews anything that's involved with the flood plains with the city. So they've looked at this. And again, the walls are being installed outside of the new designated floodway, flood plain.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's all reviewed by the right people. I don't want to create a problem that we're going to be regretting in 100 years, or 50 years, or 40 years, or tomorrow.
No, we've, we've inherited this situation, and we cleaned it up. So it's all documented. It's been through FEMA.
Okay.
The Corps of Engineers, everyone.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Jones?
If there are no other questions, I will make a motion.
I see no other questions, so you may proceed.
I move that Candela's commercial filing three, Preliminary Platt, northeast corner Candela's Parkway and West 91st Place, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. All members have voted, there are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent, so that passes. Congratulations. Excuse me, next I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-007, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 82, Purchasing and Contracts of the Arvada City Code, ordinance number 4625. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall, back on December the 11th, the city council held a workshop, and a presentation was made that outlined the purchasing process improvement team's recommended changes to our purchasing ordinances. At that meeting, we talked about some changes that included increasing approval limits, updating the authority and duties of the purchasing manager, changes to implementation of increased fiscal controls, and acceptance of electronic signatures, and further definition of processes such as sole source. The council was supportive of those modifications to the purchasing ordinance. They encouraged us, you all encouraged us to go back, draft changes to the ordinance, which is what is before you tonight. And we believe that this will implement the vision that we expressed to all of you back on the December the 11th in terms of modernizing and making more efficient our purchasing process, and therefore, we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Okay, is there any member of the public who'd like to testify on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of this and invite questions or action from the city council. Councilmember Ford?
I just had one question for Mr. Daly. On page 14 of the red line version, under paragraph C, where it says "non-competitive and exceptional methods."
Can you provide the section?
Yeah, section
Section 82-32, non-competitive and exceptional methods. And so there are paragraphs there, and this is C, under emergency procurements. I had a question about the wording there. It says that emergency procurements and emergency contracts, notwithstanding any provisions of this chapter, the city manager may authorize emergency procurements of goods and/or services when there exists a threat to public health, welfare, or safety, or other good cause exists. And I guess I had a question on the other good cause exists, because I've witnessed how wording can be interpreted. I'm curious, how would that be interpreted other, other than what was stated prior in terms of public health, welfare, or safety? What other good causes could possibly exist?
Councilmember Ford, I'm going to let the individual who wrote the ordinance, William Barber, who's an assistant, senior assistant city attorney with my office, respond to that question.
The wording actually comes from a uniform code, and it gives a certain flexibility, gives a certain flexibility. And so it's difficult to answer your question with specificity. We do have some circumstances where you'll look at it in a situation, and you can say, good cause exists here. It's, it's just a phrase, a word of art, and I'm trying to think of an example or two that we've come across there. It's not that frequent, and it's generally been up to the city manager to approve that.
Okay. I was
So another way to say that is that you're basically going to trust your city manager with, with that provision, and trust that the city manager's going to make a proper decision using that.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not new to this ordinance.
No, I realize that. But it struck me because, you know, while we have a very honest city manager at this particular moment, I was thinking about in the future, you know, could somebody misinterpret that and say, well, whoops, that's a good, this is a good cause, I think that, you know, I have
And, and what I would, what I would further indicate is, in that instance where council had a disagreement with the city manager about that, then the city, then the city council courses in control of the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
If there aren't any other questions, I'll make the motion.
See any other questions, so you may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 18-007, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 82, Purchasing and Contracts of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading number 4625 and ordered published by title only. I'd also like to make a comment to the motion.
Yep, you may.
I was, I'm so impressed with Mark, who thinks that we recall dates and times of what we remember and do. So thank you for giving us that credit. I remember the conversation, but I did not know it was December 11th. So I applaud you reminding us those, those exact times.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. Ms. Miller, may I have your vote? Thank you. All votes have been cast. There are six yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams being absent, so that motion carries. Okay. Sorry, excuse me. Next, we have a public comment period. Would anybody like to make a public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to, Mr. Devon, do you have anything else for us? I know we asked you once, to give you one more crack at it.
No, Mr. Mayor, we'll, like I said, we'll provide an updated schedule for the workshops. And I just would like to add, your action tonight on this ordinance, thank you for supporting our process improvement efforts.
You're welcome. And how about you, Mr. Daly?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.